We'll call this meeting to order to Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for August 2nd, 2022. Roll call, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Trelka? White?
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is have the agenda received as proposed or as amended. There will be an amendment on it.
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Mike, you want to address that?
Sure. So, last week, as I think everybody will recall, there was a vote on public purpose funding for an organization, Grow Cedar Valley. The vote was two to one with two supervisors abstaining. Did some research in the interim, and that vote, long story short, is a vote to pass and approve that funding. And so as a result of that, that funding has been approved. The minutes should reflect that that funding has been approved. And I believe the amount was $25,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was unfortunate the way that played out last week. So, anything we can do, I guess, to avoid that in the future, or something similar would be a good idea for the next.
Yep. Show Trelka just showed up.
Oh.
The bottom line.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, we had Layland and Schwartz.
Yes.
It was a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
As amended, yes.
Yes.
Have a motion on the floor. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next is public comments. Anyone from the public? I don't see anybody here that wants to comment on anything. How about online? Anyone from the public want to comment on anything other than what's on the agenda? Hearing none, we move on to claims and payments. Mr. Perry?
This week's expenditures total $398,056.08, of which jail commissary totals $25,274, secondary roads $143,686, sheriff's department $32,502, finally maintenance department $15,00586. Everything is normal.
Thank you, James.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. A brief construction update. Our Eagle Road, a resurfacing project started today. Our contractor has moved in. He'll be, they will be doing Colden Place Recycling. That will take probably the rest of this week. The road will be closed for the duration of the project. This is on Eagle Road from Dizert Road to US 218 or Laporte Road. The DOT will not allow us to back up any traffic onto Highway 218, so the road will be closed for the duration, meaning about three to five weeks. ASPRA will come in and resurface the road once the Colden Place Recycling has cured. That usually takes a week or seven or eight days. I also wanted to mention that last week, myself, the sheriff, conservation, recorder, we met to discuss the recent legislative changes concerning ATVs here in Iowa to some of the roads, county roads. I did put together some minutes. Those are out for review, and I'm anticipating that by the end of the week, I will be forwarding those to all the supervisors and anyone who's interested in that information. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the boardroom? Anyone online? Hearing none, moving on to minutes approved for July 26, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second.
Excuse me. Previously, when we approved the agenda, I think there was the motion on the minutes. Shouldn't, the motion to approve the amendment?
Oh, that's right. Okay. Thanks, James. Moving on to consent agenda by resolution?
I'm sorry, did, wait, did, we need a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Oh, okay, okay.
So moved.
As amended, okay.
Aye.
Second.
Moved in second and as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the contract between Blackhawk County and ESRI for geographic informational information system licenses for Blackhawk County employees effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025, win the initial annual fee of $27,500 for fiscal year '23, $40,000 for '24, and $55,000 for '25 be approved. Director chair design for same as recommended by Al Yu. Morning, Al.
Morning, Board. Al Yu, IT Director. I've had a chance to talk briefly with all of you guys about the contract that they're presenting. I do believe that is, this is the right direction for the county as GIS is expanding quite a bit across all counties. This is a very important thing to have, the licenses and the ability to expand the reach. And the main benefit of this is the ability to collaborate with different departments, internally with each department and across multiple departments, and the ability to just display all the statistics that the citizens need to see. So, do you guys have any questions for me?
None here. Anybody online got questions for Al?
I got a question for James. James, this is multiple years going into budgets in the future that we really haven't discussed yet. By voting on this today, we're committing to those two, aren't we, in the upcoming budgets?
Yeah, so Tom, what you would really be looking at is, budgetarily speaking, in FY '23, we have that covered. So we budgeted $25,000 for GIS services. This contract comes in at 27.5. That 2500 is going to be able to be absorbed in Al's operational budget, no problem. Moving into FY '24 and '25, you're absolutely right. We would need to increase that $25,000 line item to 40,000, and then in FY '25, to 55,000.
In other words, what I'm saying is, by approving this today, we automatically are committed to approve it at budget time the next two fiscal years after this year.
Yeah, just like any other contract that has, you know, standard 1%, 2%, or 3% increases, this would just be the exact same as any other, any of, any other of those contracts.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions for Al? Hearing none, this is a resolution.
Sorry, we don't have a motion yet.
Oh.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is other business. This is a resolution that the minor plat of survey submitted by Janice Miller to minor plat 1.94 acres located at 7676 Wagner Road in order to split off a home built on 35 acres. The property in question is located approximately 1/4 miles south of the Wagner Road and West Mount Vernon Road intersection. And if approved, that the county order to be directed to certify a copy of the resolutions for Blackhawk County Recorder. Good morning, Seth.
Hello. All right, good morning, supervisors. Yeah, this is a request was submitted by Janice Miller to plat 1.94 acres in order to split off a 1999 home that was built on 35 acres. After the 15-year waiting period has expired, a request to rezone or plat the property at 7676 Wagner Road. And it was moved by Bojor and seconded by Schaefer to approve the request at 7676 Wagner Road to plat 1.94 acres in order to split off a 1999 home that was built on 35 acres. And after the 15-year waiting period has expired, a request to plat or rezone the property. The request was unanimously approved in addition to the rezone at that meeting. The 1.94 acres to be platted is located at 7676 Wagner Road. The one parcel containing the 1.94 acres of the proposed rezone area has been zoned a agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning warrants in 1982. And the rezone was just recently approved by the Board of Supervisors at a meeting in July. Surrounding plat area consists of agricultural lands with some rural homes and then zoned agricultural district to the north, east, and west. Land of the south is zoned agricultural district. Plat area is designated as agricultural in the future land use map, one of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. None of the area to be platted is located within a special flood hazard area according to the Federal Emergency Agency 2011 Flood Play Map or the FEMA Preliminary Flood Play Map. The applicant's requesting to plat the 1.94 acres in order to spell out a home that was built on 35 acres after the 15-year waiting period has expired. Planning and zoning commission unanimously approved the minor plat request at their regular meeting on June 21st in addition to the rezone. All right, that's the report.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Any questions for Seth? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Trelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct to chair design for same. The purchase, one GMD 240 cone disc mower in the amount of $12,310 from Dumont Implement, Dumont, Iowa. Go ahead, Kathy.
So this comes out of our FY '23 capital budget. We budgeted $15,000 for a new disc mower. And as I discussed in my email, this mower, these mowers are used to mow the gravel road system.
Seth.
We currently, we utilize two of these. We really like this brand. We have a, that way we have a uniform fleet of these mowers. We can have parts in stock for them and be able to repair them where mechanics can. It's just time that we replace one of the mowers due to its age and its use. So we did solicit for three bids on this exact same mower from all three of them, and we are taking the low bid from Dumont Implement in Dumont, Iowa. So I would ask that we be allowed to make this purchase.
Any questions for Kathy?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is discussion possible board action. Temporary use of the basement cafeteria area by part-time election staff prior to the November 8th, 2022 general election.
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Maintenance Superintendent. I believe Grant Veder had placed this item on the agenda. It was a request that was brought to our office, again, to utilize the cafeteria area as a part-time election staff. Karen's here today, too. I believe that consisted of eight staff people. We really don't see any foreseeable use, short-term, for this space. So, looking at it, we felt it would be a good fit to house these part-time folks. One thing that we would look at from our department is securing the equipment in there, putting some sort of a barrier between the common space and where that equipment is housed. Not sure yet what that barrier looks like, but we would come up with something to isolate the equipment off. Spoke with IT as far as IT-related items such as internet. Believe wireless internet can be accessible for this area. So, I don't think I'm missing anything with that. I don't know if the board recalls, but it's been some time ago we had looked at previously the JCS. There's a storage room area over there that we had looked at to utilize for these staff. That area is still being utilized by the clerk of courts for storage. It's waiting on our help to get some of those files out of there and move down to the basement of the jail. We've been kind of at a standstill on that, just waiting to see if there's going to be any movement on the jail storage, especially with the space assessment that we had recently completed. So I do think, looking at all the different options that we have available to us, this cafeteria space would probably be the best, best one.
Did you mention how long it was going to be utilized? Or approximate? No, I thought you answered my question, because I was wondering if the room would accommodate what they needed to as far as requirements.
Yeah.
We have an higher and additional 20 people. You know our space over there, and so we're hoping that we can fit 12 in there, and then we're going to need the extra overflow for another eight. And it's really nice that they can all be in the same building. So, yeah, six weeks, middle of September through the election, November 8th.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is discussion possible board action. amend the agenda procedure to include positions other than the elected officials and department heads.
Okay, I'll comment on this, and hopefully we'll just be brief. But I said, my note was July 5th, so just about a month ago today that we talked about, or actually voted on the procedure for the agendas. And I think everything, as we talked about then, was going to remain everything the same. The only step that actually we're removing was the board needing to approve or staff waiting to see that the agenda was, item was requested that was approved. And so, at that time, I hadn't thought about it. I designed it after the 2014 inter-office memo. But since that time, there'd been some confusion from individuals that put items on our agenda typically that are, other than elected officials or department heads. So, my attempt today was just really to clarify that we either want to change the procedure for some of the other individuals or that we have the same process in place for all the individuals that have been putting items on our agenda previously. And some of those, Seth is here today. I know he was one, our zoning administrator, but I can list them by name or just some of the positions. But I thought they were to include the zoning administrator, the assistant county attorney, the general assistance coordinator, and if the name helps, that's Colleen Shipper. She's someone that was allowed to put on. Mike Trinan for assistant county attorney. Seth is our zoning administrator. Tim Jamison for the systems real estate tax manager. Billy Joe Heth, payroll and accounting manager. Ben Delagardel, Karen Dowell, chief operating officer for CSS. And I had included earlier Mr. Perry as a finance director, but just making certain that we cover everyone that puts items on and aren't later having to bring this up again. Kayla had helped me with the list somewhat. I had a few names. She added some more. Even after she put the, some list together for us, I said Judy Flores was another name. Our assessor is another person that also puts items on the agenda. So, it was really just, the process was designed to simplify the process, not complicate it. If there was any reason to change the process for these individuals who also put items on the agenda, I thought probably best that we discuss it now at the front end of this instead of having individuals put something on the agenda and be sending mixed signals. I know Seth was confused a little bit. He'd received communication from a couple of us, and it was counter to what each one was saying. So I thought we wanted to speak certainly with one voice from the board's perspective and not each of us individually. So, just really wanting to have discussion if that's needed or just thoughts on what we do so we can clarify this for those individuals so they're not confused on whether or not that the process changes for them. Any comments? I know, I know, Tom, you'd made a comment about, or I guess your email. You indicated, you know, you'd like to return to the old process that we had been utilizing for the past 50 years. And just to acknowledge that, I was going to say it was actually in 2014 when we changed this process, so it hasn't been 50 years. But I just wanted to say that I remember being here two years in my tenure. In the first two years, we didn't have, the board have to approve the items. And it did seem to work rather well. So, if you want to comment to that, or if you don't think it's been working well, I'm open to more discussion on it, but it's just making sure we clear it up for everybody.
I think it made sense to me. What you said was the term "our" agenda.
Yeah, okay. I do, I truly believe it is the board's agenda, you know.
When indicated Seth is a county employee, that's incorrect. He is not a county employee. Just because we have a contract with the city of Arlo for P&amp;Z Services. We have a contract with Cedar Valley Humane Society. Is that an employee? True employee is the director of Solid Ways. That's a county employee there. It's on the county payroll. Karen works for another organization, not Blackhawk County. Colleen does work for Blackhawk County. But basically, you're saying all the people we have a contract with would be county employees and put something on the agenda.
No, I'm not saying they're county employees. I'm saying they've been putting, placing items on the agenda previously. And if we want a different process for them, then let's address that now so that we're all clear on what we're doing and asking them to do, and clear for them as well as for Kayla, so that when she adds those items, she's not trying to make the decision of whether they should or shouldn't be approved by us. And you bring up a good point. Ben Delagardel is definitely one that I'd say falls in that category. But if there are people, and so there may be people that aren't listed that we've talked about today that you'd like a different process for. But Seth is listed as the Blackhawk County zoning administrator on our website. I mean, he's identified, you know, for if someone's to contact him or work with him on our county projects, they contact him directly. So, but certainly, if we want to change that, we can.
If you look at the billing, they put their whole staff on there.
Yes.
So basically, you're able to contact anybody over there from Eric Schrader all the way up to Noel Anderson. But, you know, in the end, Linda, I don't really care. Open the whole thing up and just let people put whatever they want on the agenda. If it works out, fine. If it doesn't, let's just move on. But, like I said, this is all creative. It really shouldn't even, none of it should have happened. We were doing fine. But do what you want to do. I don't care.
Well, Tom.
Chairperson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
So, what we're looking for is to simply amend the resolution, and in doing so, adding or articulating these positions that we as a board think should be allowed to put items on the agenda.
Yes, since we're taking it kind of to an official step on that, I guess that's what we'd be doing, but yes.
And is, no, and I listened to, is Mike Hendrickson on there?
No, and, oh, you mean, no, yeah, he's online. You mean on the list, don't you, Dan?
On the list, right.
He, and that can be questionable. Like I said, I know sometimes he and the FISA, because of the autonomous boards, were not considered department heads. But in many of our areas, they are considered department heads. So I would think, yes, they'd be included on the list initially.
Well, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we include all the positions, and I think they should be named by position, in addition to the public health director and the conservation director.
What about the VA director?
Yes, yes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
I don't see what difference it would make if the VA director calls me and asks to put something on the agenda. Done. Contact the supervisor.
Financial director.
Pardon me?
What about the financial director?
About him putting stuff on the agenda?
Well, I mean, he's part of this, then, right?
He's on the list, yes.
But it should be done consistently, I think, by the email, which makes us all aware of it instead of just one person.
Well, there's a lot of stuff that goes on only one person gets, and I'm not going to go into detail on that.
But I mean, the agenda items, as far as being requested on that?
No, about stuff that's not shared completely with everyone, like you were just talking about.
Well, and, and Tom, I understand that we've done this process for quite some time, and I know it's difficult, but I was even thinking this morning, though, when you talk about something ending up on the agenda that we don't want on. You know, we have the time of the request. That's why when the request comes through, we can speak up then or address it then. We also get the preliminary agenda on Thursday, so we have that opportunity to address questions or pull something. We also get the final agenda on Friday, so we would still have that opportunity. And then ultimately, when we show up at our meeting today, if we have more questions or don't feel that there's enough information, we can, at that timetable, an item or say, you know, address the fact that we don't have what we need. So, I wanted to be sure we are doing that as well. I'm not trying to take away any authority or something from the board. It's just trying to make the process simpler for everyone.
Once it's posted Friday and goes out to the, all the recipient, posted on the website, then it's public knowledge regardless if you take it off Tuesday or not.
The agenda item, so I said, yeah, there is some scrutiny, I guess, on all our parts for our agenda items. That's for department heads as well as supervisors, I guess, to make certain that we've looked at the preliminary, looked again at that final on Friday. But I understand what you're saying. Once it's public record.
It's public record.
Yeah, it is. We could delay it if you'd like till Monday at 9:00 a.m., I guess, if we wanted to be officially correct. But we've chosen that Friday seemed to work well for all of us.
It doesn't make any difference.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the motion on the floor.
Yes, there is. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Got a motion on the floor, and is there a second?
I think Chris.
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, can I get a clarification on the motion? Linda, was it all of the positions that Linda read previously plus the three commission directors?
I believe so.
And did I?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a copy of that list?
Yeah, sure.
You said Judy. Do you have a copy you could provide?
Okay, sure.
Roll call vote, please.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Trelka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
No.
That passes. Any reports or information from the board?
I've got one thing, Craig. A couple of weeks ago, I think it was, we approved something pending. I think it was something for the elections office. At the time, I thought we should have just tabled it. I'd like, it's been two weeks, and we still don't have the information that the board needed to actually pass that. I'd like to have the assistant county attorney talk about that a little bit, what he's waiting on yet for that.
Supervisor Little, what we're talking about is a contract for an elections website. The, the vote was taken to approve it pending obtaining necessary insurance coverage. At last check, and I last emailed the representative for the company that would be creating that website and that we would be contracting with, I last emailed him on Friday. I don't believe, as of earlier this morning, I've yet heard back from him from that email, but I know that they were in the process of obtaining insurance. Based on the recommendation of our risk manager as well as my own recommendation, the company should have liability insurance, cyber liability insurance, and some other coverages. And we're waiting to get proof of those coverages before the contract is finalized. So right now, we're still in a holding pattern, waiting on proof of insurance from that company.
That answer?
Thank you.
I got two things. September 9th to 11th is going to be our 45-hour vigil for the Vietnam vets that were killed or missing in action from Blackhawk County. That'll start on September 9th at 3:00 in the afternoon and end at noon, September 11th. Everyone's encouraged to attend. And September 21st Honor Flight, there's still about 50-some seats available for veterans to go to DC in September to see the memorials that recognize them for their service. So if they've got anybody out there that hasn't So if there's got anybody out there that hasn't gone and needs to go, we have applications available here in the office. That's all I have. Anyone else? Hearing none, we're going to go into closed session, so we'll ask everyone to our take. See you, Seth.
See ya. Say you haven't got anything turned off, or?
It shouldn't be a problem for him.
Maybe he's, maybe he didn't.
I'll go talk to Caleb.
Okay.
Maybe, yeah.
We're in a holding pattern.
We, I've seen.
Pardon me?
Are we in open session?
Yeah, still.
You gotta read, gotta read that resolution with everybody there in open session.
We're waiting for, see if we need to meet.
And Tom, in case you didn't hear, we're waiting somebody to hop on Zoom who's essential to this closed session.
Yeah, but I, they don't have nothing to do with the resolution in open session.
No, he's reading the resolution, Tom, if they're not going to show up. Right?
Well, Kayla's supposed to have set it up, why don't you ask her? She's there.
James did.
Tom, she did set it up. He's, he's just not responding, and he hasn't been on the, and he hasn't been on Zoom. So Kayla did what she needed to do.
Mike?
I confirmed that beforehand as well.
Well, yeah, if he doesn't, he doesn't.
We're going to push back the decision anyway.
Maybe the extra week will be better.
What do you want to do, Mike?
So if he doesn't hop on here within the next couple of minutes, my thought is, we push this back at least a week. The one good thing is, there's still some documentation we've been wanting from him related.
That we don't have yet.
That we don't have yet, so we weren't going to be able to decide on it regardless until we had that.
James?
Yeah.
If we move this till next week, why don't somebody make contact with him prior to the meeting, like at 8:30, to make sure that he's going to be on?
Well, Tom, that's, that's, I guess what I'm trying to tell you is, that's exactly what Kayla was trying to do. So she, not only did she reach out to, reach out to John Prior, she tried calling him this morning, she emailed him this morning, he didn't answer his phone, he didn't respond to emails, so she's, again, Kayla's, Kayla's really doing what she needs to do, but it's just, this one's on John.
I'm not questioning, I'm just saying, we gotta get the guy and let him know that he's going to be on tap here.
Well, yeah, that's what we tried to do, I guess. That's, that's what I'm trying to say is.
But I guess, here we are, and you didn't say anything that you can't get a hold of a guy.
He, he said yesterday, John Malarkey told Kayla yesterday that he would be on Zoom for the meeting today.
Thank you, Mike.
Do you want to know what time he was told?
9:00 a.m.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.